Now to approve items B and C, the variance and site plan reviews. Are there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing done. Clerk, please call the roll.
Vreeland.
Aye.
Slack.
Aye.
Magrino.
Aye.
Luke Keep here.
Aye.
Kronzer.
Aye.
Gagnon.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Seven zero.
And that motion carries. Moving on, our next item for discussion is item nine, the 721 North First Street apartment. Staff is Ms. DeVore.
Good evening, Commissioners. This is a project located at 721 North First Street in the North Loop neighborhood. There are five applications before you. The applicant is proposing 124-unit residential building. It would be six stories in height with one additional story of mechanical equipment. An elevator overrun for a total of seven stories, approximately 90 feet. The building will have a principal entrance facing North First Street and walk-up units along Eighth Avenue and also First Street. Vehicle access to the building will be along Eighth Avenue. Abbasid Creek runs under the southeastern portion of the site, and the applicant has designed the footprint of the building to follow the easement that follows the path of Bassett Creek Tunnel. Over the area where the tunnel is, Public Works will allow a surface parking lot, and they are proposing to have a 20-space surface parking lot over Bassett Creek Tunnel. This project was reviewed by the Heritage Preservation Commission on May 3rd. This is located in the St. Anthony Falls Historic District. They did approve the project. That action from the HPC was appealed to the full city council on June 9th. The zoning and planning committee took up the appeal, and they did deny that appeal, and added a condition that the elevations of the building on Eighth Avenue and then the elevation facing Second Street North also be brick, as the HPC had added a condition that the First Street North elevation be all brick. The elevations and plans in your packet reflect an all-brick exterior in those three facades as a result of the full city council action that was approved on June 17th of this year. So, the first application is a conditional use permit to increase the height of the Per the zoning code definition, the proposed building is technically seven stories in height with six stories of residential and one story of mechanical equipment. The seventh story occupies a very small percentage of the overall building footprint. It's classified as a story because the elevator overrun exceeds 14 feet in height. If it did not, it would not be a seventh story. It would be a six-story building per the zoning code. And the mechanical story of the building is set back 34 feet from the primary facade along North First Street and 32 feet from the primary facade along Eighth Avenue North. The proposed height of the building is compatible with other buildings in the area. It exceeds the downtown height overlay district allowance by six feet. In the St. Anthony Falls Historic District, the design guidelines call for mid-rise, seven to nine stories, and low-rise, four to six stories buildings that are most appropriate. Again, the HPC did approve the building in this configuration and this height. The height of the building will not impede access to light and air for surrounding properties. The closest buildings are separated from the site by public streets or a series of surface parking lots that are approximately 200 feet in width. The shadow studies that are near packet indicate that the proposed building will cast shadows on the residential properties to the east and the west. However, the shadowing impacts do not appear to be significant, given the context of the area. The area is densely built out, and that during the periods of peak shadowing, much of the surrounding vicinity is currently shadowed by those existing buildings. The height of the buildings in the area range between two and eight stories. Again, this proposed building is technically seven stories but six stories of residential. The second application before you is a conditional use permit for a surface parking lot. The site is currently utilized as a surface parking lot. There are 125 spaces in the existing parking lot that will be demolished or torn up for the proposed development. All of the existing spaces are visible from the public streets. The proposed parking lot will be located towards the interior side of the site, adjacent to the parking lots that are not part of this project. The building will conceal the parking lot from both First Street North and Eighth Avenue North and along Second Street, and then that south property line, the applicant is proposing fencing and landscaping to help screen that from those views. The third application is a variance of the west interior side yard setback from 15 feet down to 10. This is located in the C3A zoning district. Setbacks are required for residential uses with windows facing the interior property line. It's five plus two X for every story over the first with a maximum height of, or maximum setback, excuse me, of 15 feet for this building. That maximum setback is 15 feet. The second through the six floors of the building will be constructed 10 feet from the western interior property line, and therefore the variance is required. That western interior property line, again, abuts a property line that is utilized for surface parking. In the area, it's characteristic to construct buildings close to the property lines, so the reduced setback will be more in keeping with the area. The character of the area and the location of Bassett Creek Tunnel are unique circumstances that were not created by the applicant. The next application, then, is a variance to increase the maximum amount of parking on the site from 1.7 to 1.77 spaces per unit. And the maximum parking requirement in the downtown parking overlay is 1.7 spaces per dwelling. There are 124 dwelling units with a maximum parking requirement of 211 spaces. In addition, residential developments over 50 dwelling units need to provide guest parking spaces, and this development has a requirement of two guest spaces, so the maximum parking requirement is 213. They're proposing 222 parking spaces, 220 for the residential and two for the guests. However, the applicant has indicated that as part of the sale of the building, a parking lease for 70 vehicles needs to be maintained for office tenants in a nearby building across First Street North from the site. But these 70 spaces, when you subtract those 70 spaces, the total amount being provided on the site would be 152 for the 124 dwelling units, or 1.26 spaces per unit. While this does not exceed that maximum parking, if the lease for the office tenants were to go away at any point in the future, the maximum parking requirement would be exceeded by a total of 12 spaces. CPAD finds that needing to provide a parking lease for the 70 vehicles for office tenants is a practical difficulty, and providing the additional parking spaces for those office tenants will help alleviate parking pressure on the public streets. The last application is site plan review. They do meet all of the standards in site plan review except for the minimum window requirements, and then we have added a couple of additional conditions to the development. The project is in compliance with the minimum window requirement, except on the first floor of the building facing the onsite parking lot. So, that is actually the side of the building where this is facing that west property line or the adjacent surface parking lot. There are no windows in that location. Due to the, the applicant has indicated that due to the location of the enclosed parking, that these walls have been designed without windows. Since the building has a window requirement on all four sides, CPAD is recommending that alternative compliance be granted by the planning commission to allow no windows on that one building wall. The additional conditions that we have also added to site plan review talks about the recessed areas on the ground floor of the building of the west facade to align with the bays above. And these plans, I believe, have been adjusted to show that, you can see that the windows in these window bays, there are the recessed areas of the brick wall. So, if you recall from our conversation committee, the whole, it's a brick wall, and then the recessed areas are brick, and they're inset one brick or three inches. So, you will see that definition and get that shadowing effect. We're just recommending that, and this has been adjusted since this went to HPC, but that those recessed bays align with the window bays above. The other condition, then, that we've added, the applicant is proposing to screen the parking lot with landscaping and then a vinyl-coated chain link fence. Because that fence will be visible from Second Street, we are recommending that it be a decorative metal fence instead of a black vinyl-coated chain link. So, those are the conditions that we've added to site plan. We are recommending approval of all applications, and I will stand for any questions.
Okay, Commissioners. Commissioner Luke Keep here.
Yeah, Hillary, I'm just wondering if you can touch a little bit on the alternative compliance being requested for the windows. It seems as though that's kind of a condition the applicant's created in terms of having the garage. Can you maybe expound on that a little bit in case I'm missing something?
We felt that because the building has, in other projects where a building has a window requirement on all four sides, we have provided relaxation. You do have to have a back-of-house for projects, and in this case, that building wall would be looking into their surface parking area, not surface, but their enclosed parking area. And so, in lieu of looking into the parking lot, we have recommended alternative compliance, again, because they have a window requirement on all four sides.
And are they doing any other enhancements or improvements to mitigate the lack of, basically, the bare wall that will be facing out, even though it's an interior yard?
Yeah, and that bare wall is set back, you know, it's on the other side of the surface parking lot. So, that bare wall is set back from that interior property line, and that interior property line is unadjacent to a surface parking lot. So, to help screen, I guess, the parking lot and also the blank wall, it would be the landscaping and the fencing.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bender.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess you kind of answered it, but I had a question about how, where that blank wall would be visible from public spaces and what's facing it. So, as you're walking along whichever street that is.
Yeah, so this is Second Street.
Second Street.
Eighth Avenue up here. So, this is a surface parking lot. So, and there's surface parking here. This property surrounds the building on the two sides. So, past these cars and these cars, you could potentially see through those cars parked in those parking lots and see that wall. But it is set back significantly from that property line.
Okay. I'll just note, I did have concerns about that as well. And then I wondered if I missed it, and I apologize. What happened to the, as this came through the council, we added conditions related to the materials.
Correct.
After the HPC.
Yep.
Appeal. So, is this updated from that?
These are updated, correct. The one thing that I noticed in your packet, the rendering is not, but the elevations are correct. And so, when this went to HPC and before council, this had been metal. They've now brought the brick all the way up through the sixth floor. There is a metal cornice, but that meets the intent. On Eighth Avenue, this material in the middle, the dark brown, had been a dark metal. Now it is brick. And then facing Second Street, it's brick all the way up to the sixth floor, just like you see on First Street.
Okay. Are there any further questions of staff? Commissioner Luke Keep here.
So, then, just to be sure that I'm clear, because they're in the downtown height overlay district, they are allowed by right six stories or 84 feet. They're just requesting more to get to the height increase of approximately six feet.
Correct. The applicant has indicated, although they don't want to do this, they could add a slower elevator and bring the overrun down, but because they choose to install better, efficient, faster elevators, that the overrun is slightly taller.
So, that's what's triggering the request for the higher height. It's the base of the elevator on the roof.
Correct. It is for that elevator overrun.
All right. So, but if that weren't there, were invisible, for example, this would meet, they're allowed, but they're allowed to build onsite by right.
If that elevator overrun were lowered, it would be six stories as of right. Thank you.
Are there any other questions of staff? Seeing none at this time, I'll open the public hearing on this item. I'd like to ask the applicant to speak first. Please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Jason Lord, 3532 Fremont Avenue South, and I'm a project manager with Solheim Companies.
I am Sarah Klein, 5339 Pleasant Avenue. I am the asset manager for Solheim Companies. We represent Solheim Companies as a developer, and we are owners in our properties. I helped begin and develop this company nine years ago. We are a small Minneapolis company specializing in turning parking lots into thriving communities, supporting both the long-term goals of the North Loop Neighborhood Plan and the long-term goals of the Minneapolis Comprehensive Plan. We are part of the development every step of the way, from the initial idea to city approvals, to when our residents move in, to hosting neighborhood events, to connect our newest residents to the North Loop. We are a local business with our office about 200 feet from the parking lot in question. We own and manage four neighboring buildings with nearly 400 residents and 42,000 square feet of office space. We build communities that are sustainable, support neighboring businesses, bring in new business, and provide incubator space for the new creative economy. We provide live-work space for dozens of businesses, bring greatly needed property tax base to our city, and additional funding for parks. Please view the parking lot pictures from this past weekend. And Jason, if you can kind of point out on that map where the building would sit.
So, our building is taking up one-third of this existing two-and-a-half-acre surface parking lot. It's a square city block, and our building is located around this area of the parking lot. And the rendering compared to a photograph of the parking lot from this past weekend showing the live-work storefront-style loft spaces along Eighth Avenue.
Our current parking count on the 720 lot is 120 stalls. When our building opens, we will have 220 parking stalls, including 70 stalls for existing contract parking tenants that use the lot. This is a net gain of 100 parking stalls. As was detailed by Hillary, we are requesting a variance to add parking beyond what is allowed by zoning code. This variance will support the existing 724 office businesses located across the street that use our lot and promote their long-term stability. Key facts to date: The North Loop Neighborhood Group unanimously supported our project and wrote a letter of support in January. The Heritage Preservation Commission unanimously supported our project. When the Itasca condo owners appealed the HPC's decision, the city zoning board unanimously overturned the appeal. Our project will help grow Minneapolis downtown and North Loop neighborhood population, consistent with Minneapolis' plan for sustainable growth, the 2010 North Loop Development Master Plan and zoning codes, and the 2012 St. Anthony Historic Guidelines. We understand that change can be difficult, and we are willing to work alongside our neighbors to build a vibrant and growing North Loop neighborhood. We hope that alongside the unanimous support of the North Loop Neighborhood Group and the Heritage Preservation Commission, you will support our project at 721. We thank Hillary for presenting our project to the committee, and will return for any questions to the committee for discussion.
Right, thank you. Commissioners, are there any questions of the applicant? If there are none, we can move on to some other speakers. And just so I have a sense, how many of you would like to speak on this item? So, quite a few of you. I am going to ask that we limit our total testimony to 45 minutes. So, right now, it is 5:40, so we can spend 45 minutes or until 6:25 if needed. I will just remind you to, well, first, state your name and address into the microphone for the record, and also keep your remarks as concise as possible, not simply repeat what others have said, and keep them fairly concise. I won't time you, but I'd ask if you start to go over about two minutes or so, I may just remind you to make sure other people have some time to speak. So, we can start over on this side of the room. Who would like to speak first? Yes, please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
My name's Richard Rubenstein. I am a 20-year owner at the Itasca, so I have a big stake in the neighborhood, personal stake in it. And you know, there's a bunch of us speaking, and my role in this presentation is to talk, give you the, we're going to give you the statistics from a petition that was spread and signed, and then just make a few comments. First of all, the message of the petition says, "Over 6,300 individuals oppose the 721 development and demand that the city of Minneapolis deny all variances, conditional use permits, and reject the development as a whole." Now, I think it's fair for me to say that, that's not, we're not here to just say there shouldn't be any development, and I'm not here saying that. But there is a unique parking problem associated with this development, and it has to do with the retail and commercial space and long-term parking needs of the neighborhood, which is actually where I'm coming from, is a long-term parker who needs parking, long-term person who needs parking. So, I think our, at least what I'm here to say is, I actually welcome the development. I don't just want a parking lot there. But the parking problem should be addressed. Otherwise, I think the vitality of the neighborhood will be lost and we'll lose something important, and that's what they're going to be talking more about.
Right, thank you.
My name is Eric Foster. I am a resident of Minneapolis, 1017 25th Avenue Southeast. This here is our petition, put together by Matt Jansen, that has over 6,254 names on it. That is a petition in direct opposition of this proposed development, not development in general, but this proposed development. 3,584 of these signatures are from within the city. 2,570 signatures are outside of our city. And of those, 1,081 signatures from the rest of our nation, as well as 20 from our nations. So, I just want to remind everybody that this is a petition against this particular development, and the state's watching, the nation's watching, and the city voters are watching. Thank you.
Right, thank you. Who would like to speak next? Yes, please come to the microphone and state your name and address.
Hello, I'm Patrick Sussmelt. I live at 2222 Seventh Street in Lake Bear Lake, and I would like to talk more about the variances, because from what my understanding here is that variances are granted when there are practical difficulties exist in complying with the ordinance because of circumstances unique to the property and are not based on economic considerations alone. But like, if you look at the photos, it's just a pretty flat lot, and I don't really, I guess I don't understand, like, you could build without the variances, and it seems like the variances are for economic gain. And I guess I would just like to ask is that what difficulties are being solved by these I also don't know if I can ask questions.
You can, I think at this point, it would be best if we simply took testimony, and then we can see if the Commissioners want to ask those questions of staff afterwards.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Sharon Johnson. I live at 708 North First Street in Minneapolis, a 20-plus-year resident of the Itasca. I have attended numbers of different hearings on this issue. I have a focus, which is on variances, but I need to say a couple things first. I think that this development does not meet the aesthetic needs or is in context with our neighborhood. I think the changes will be great, as are other developments by Solheim. They just, aesthetically, they don't, the materials used and the aesthetics are not appealing. As far as the height variance, I have a concern. I know Hillary said that she talked about that there had been shadow studies done, but I am concerned about the loss of light, and also, there's another building about a block away that has rooftop access, and there's entertainment up there. If the elevator's there, will there be entertainment on this rooftop access? Parking is the main concern here. I know that, because we are losing 130 spaces, and we don't, we can't afford to lose those spaces, because in the neighborhood, it does not allow for people that come into the business or doesn't cover parking for residents. But what I also want to address here, and I'll make this brief, is there is another variance that is being requested, and that variance is for setback. I believe that there's a city ordinance that requires that there be a 15-foot setback in developing of properties, and this is being, it is being requested that this variance be given, so that this would not be the concern or the need for this area. My concern is that it will impact the safety of pedestrians that are traveling in the area. Our particular niche of the North Loop has a great deal of pedestrian traffic, and I don't think that egress will be as fluid nor are the safety concerns of the pedestrians being addressed by doing this change. I'm wondering, I think, I believe that it is Mr. Gunsberry, that he has a burden to show that by not receiving this variance, that it is a practical difficulty to develop the property, and I would question as to whether or not he has done this, because it appears that, you know, his gain, his desire for the variance is more an economic focus rather than a practical focus. Thank you.
Right, thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Ayana Ruggiero, and I am a resident at 708 North First Street in the Itasca Lofts, as well as a small business owner in the Historic District that we're talking about. According to Gunsberry's proxy, all of the groups that she mentioned were completely on board with all of this. I would like to point out very briefly that this room is not representative of those folks that said yes to all of these votes along the way. It is not us. We all understand and respectfully agree to present our case and request a view to deny the conditional use permits for the proposed development at 721. We understand that your process is set up to be just fair and to avoid litigation. However, just as Commissioner Vreeland dove into the proverbial penumbra of the logistics and impact of the increased walk-ins, drive-throughs, we ask that you offer, our community, your constituents, the same considerations. We, the residents, business owners, and patrons, request you deny the parking variance, conditional use permit, for the following reasons. The increase in parking proposed by Mr. Gunsberry would not serve to eliminate practical difficulties unique to the property. Instead, it serves the financial interest of the developer alone, as he and his company will require private parking for the new renters and building five at Itasca, which he recently purchased privately. There have been no appropriate or reasonable solutions for the decreased parking for the current residents, businesses, and owners and patrons. I would also like to note that there are many among us who pay over $100 per month to park across the street in those surface lots, and there is bound to be somebody else who wants our money for that, along with a mixed-use development that will support the local businesses in our community. Thank you.
Right, thank you. And please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Ailin Michelle Middleport. I live at 708 North First Street in Minneapolis, in the Itasca Building. I am talking specifically about statute 525.500, "In the same vein of practical difficulties existing to comply with the ordinance because of circumstances unique to the property." We do not believe or see that there are unique circumstances with the existing property that justify approval of the setback or parking variance. Requested variances are not required to construct 721 North First Street according to city ordinance, nor do they relieve Gunsberry of any practical difficulty to develop the surface parking lot. We ask that you explain how there is a practical difficulty that grants a variance to the setback and parking requirements. Thank you.
Right, and please state your name and address.
Hello, James Moore, 3410 Gerard Avenue South, which is in Uptown Minneapolis, which is an area of Minneapolis, which is no stranger to luxury apartment developments, and I've personally seen the impact that has had on our community over the past 20 years. It is certainly not the same uptown that Prince wrote about. To the parking variance, I would oppose that. As someone who has worked in the North Loop for 15 years, I don't know where I am going to park to come to work, let alone people coming from the going to park to come to work, let alone people coming from the suburbs that don't have access to light, light rail. And perhaps one day they will, but for the time being, that's not an option for a lot of people. The representatives from the developers spoke that their mission is to build on parking lots to create thriving communities, and I would argue in this case, with respect, that you're going against your own mission statement. It would destroy a currently thriving community to not have parking available for residents coming in to support businesses. And I might add the arts, which is something that Minneapolis has been known to be ardent supporters of. And then just very quickly, the photos that were shown earlier of the parking lot in question, you'll notice that those were all daytime photos. I would be interested to see some photos taken after sundown. The only other parking available, if this, as proposed, goes through, would be the lot, the Washington Ramp on Washington North, Tenth Avenue, which has hours of operation from six AM to nine PM, which of course is not a solution for any nightlife in the Twin Cities. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Shannon Paul.
Commissioner Bender, I think Commissioner Bender had a question for the previous speaker.
Oh, no, I actually just wanted to stop to clarify. Mr. Chair, thank you. Mr. Wittenberg, there's some confusion, because my understanding is the variance is to increase the amount of parking required, since we're having so much testimony about the parking. I just wondered if you could quickly clarify that.
Right, parking that would not serve the public interest.
Right. Okay.
So if we deny the variance, there'll be less parking.
Commissioners.
So, Mr. Wittenberg, let's, let's let Mr. Wittenberg clarify that.
That, that is correct, that the variance related to parking is to allow them to provide more parking than ordinance would allow them to normally provide.
Okay, we can go back to our testimony. Yes, and please state your name.
I'm Shannon Paul. My address is forty-eight nineteen Idaho Avenue North in Crystal. I am also from Go ninety-six-three, which you should know is part of Go Media. So we are located in the Ford Center, of course, another business that is in the North Loop area. So I have had firsthand experience as the density has grown in this area, and there are some things that we all know is really good about that, and some things that are definitely a detriment to the area. We consider this particular project a similar thing that would, in the long run, be a detriment to the area, and there's a few reasons why. Again, we would like to see this particular variance denied, because it does not take into account the rest of the economic responsibility to the area, and only looks at the economic upside for this particular developer. You know, I also am on the board for the Pacer Center and the Autism Society of Minnesota, and I bring them up because they are two examples of community organizations that this community has been supporting. And we would encourage you to take into account the existing businesses in that area that are already supporting our Twin Cities community, regardless of whether other people say that they might do a similar thing.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, I'm Brian Miller, forty-three eighteen Pillsbury Avenue. I moved here from Illinois six years ago, oh, eight years ago now, it's been a while. I was going to move to New York or Los Angeles to perform stand-up comedy, that was what I was going to do, but I chose Minneapolis specifically because Acme Comedy Company is here, and it has a national reputation, and people all over the country told me this is where I should go. I think sometimes we lose sight of our own national treasures. We've got Acme Comedy Company, it's the first avenue of comedy. And down in that North Loop, you've got Acme Comedy Company, Bachelor Farmer, Spoon and Stable Bunkers, all businesses that get us written up in the New York Times, get us mention us on The Tonight Show. Acme Comedy Company was on The Tonight Show six months ago. By having a tiny, to making the slight variations, you have these small bump for a developer that could cost us press publicity and acclaim on a national scale. And most importantly is, this is not an either-or issue. It's not about no development, it's not about evil land developers building directly on top of a business. This is something that could be fixed. It's not, it doesn't have to be either-or, but if we look at it that way, and we don't plan carefully, the planning commission, then we could lose some vital businesses. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Earl Elliott Irvin Smith, five six three five Minnetonka Boulevard, St. Louis Park. And I worked in the North Loop for four years now, and I used to live at five forty-five North First Street, which is the River Station condos, and parking was always an issue. Like, when I moved about a year ago, I had to move because of all the other luxury apartments they're building around, so my, my rent went up. So I don't know how many luxury apartments they can build around deja vu, but like, it's... So I had to move, but when I lived there, the parking situation was terrible, like, at night, as Ben, or, I'm sorry, James said, that you can't find parking at night certain times, it's like trying to go to a Star Wars movie. Like, it's incredibly hard, like, you would have to walk people back to their cars, talking about girls. It's just hard to get more, like, businesses to come out from the suburbs to park if they're not, there's nowhere to park. Like, we have nowhere to park, we work there, there's nowhere to work, I mean, there's nowhere to park to go to work. People have to fill meters, and then if they take away, what is it, a hundred more spots? I think? So they're saying they're going to add private parking, so it's not going to be for us. So pretty much, it's just impossible to park.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mikel Budge. I live at three two two three Central Avenue Northeast. I was wanting to respectfully ask the commission if any of you have been to a show at Acme Comedy Club before? And, and did you have a good time? People, when I do shows there, have you been? It's really a great community builder, it's that you meet your neighbor, it's a wonderful experience. I do cultural clean shows there. And I, I just would like to say, I have people come in, most of my crowd comes from the woods. I, they don't like to merge, but they'll come to my comedy show because they want to see Acme Comedy Company, and they will eat a lot of food, and they will support the community. These people are coming from White Bear Lake, they're coming from north of Anoka, they're coming from Forest Lake, Wyoming. I've had a guy fly in from Washington, that was creepy. They want to see the area for what it has to offer, and if these small businesses can't survive because of the parking, and I, I think the photos were misleading there, because I've not been able to park in that lot before, the businesses can't survive, and they won't be, there won't be a draw in the neighborhood for these people to come and spend their money. If you project my numbers, and I don't sell out, if you just projected my numbers for the year, that would be eighty-five thousand people coming to this one club for the year, and that's on small crowds, and that doesn't count the lab, it doesn't count the other entertainment in the area. And also just saying, if we have to park over half mile away, it's not safe for a single female to walk, and I, I won't do it, and I don't expect a handicapped person to do that, or an ill person to do that, and I would hope that you'd show some empathy for these people. They can actually attend somewhat easily a really nice nightly event. Thanks very much.
Thank you. And next speaker, please state your name and address for the record. Yes?
My name is Greg Coleman, live at Residence thirteen oh two Douglas Avenue South. And pretty much what we're talking about here is the density of downtown. You guys want to get seventy thousand more people into the downtown area, which is fine, which is what we are all for, and there's what, one hundred and twenty-five units that are supposed to go above our club, which can fill up to anywhere from three hundred to four hundred new possible residents filling in that. So I don't want them to use that as, but listen, there's going to be three hundred, four hundred people coming into this neighborhood and coming into this area. The issue is, with those people coming in, there's a lot of businesses that you guys, that the developer will use and say, hey, listen, come to North Loop, we have entertainment, we have restaurants, but all that stuff is going to be kicked out if there is nowhere to park. We had over six thousand petitions signed from people over the nation. So that's over six thousand people that are potentially not going to come to this neighborhood anymore, to have three hundred, maybe three hundred people who are going to move in. So we're not saying, don't develop this, but let's develop it smart. You don't have to develop it right away and quickly. Take your time, find a way that this can work for everybody. So we're talking about employees losing their job, we're talking about people having to move out. So this is this all that we're asking. We're not against it, but let's do it the right way. Everything doesn't have to be built now, now, now. That's why this neighborhood is successful, because people came in, they made small businesses, they made sacrifices, and they did it the slow way and the smart way. And if we're going to kick them out just to get some new people in here right away that's going to say, we're going to sustain this area, it will not sustain, and that bubble will be on your hands.
All right, thank you. Next speaker, and please state your name and address for the record. I should mention, too, the microphones work best if you're a little ways away from it.
Check one, yeah. I always, I always have to follow Greg again. My name is Tim Harmsen, I'm at thirty-two twenty-three Central Avenue Northeast, Minneapolis. I just want to talk about the twenty twenty-five density goal. They want to bring seventy thousand people into the downtown to increase the density, and I think that's great. I think that the, the development is great. We need places for people to live if we're going to increase the density. However, it's a quantity goal, is it a quality goal? Is it a quality goal? You know, it's, it's a quantity goal, but is it a quality goal? And this development is a very small bubble that's created a giant wave. There's news cameras, there's articles, there's Twitter, there's a lot of traffic about this particular development, because people see it as a tipping point for this city, because First Avenue and Acme are synonymous. And if people can't park, and I just say this quickly, you have to understand the mechanics of a comedy club. On a Friday night, three hundred people come in, see a show, they leave, three hundred more people come in, see a show, and they leave. Have you been to the North Loop recently? It's really hard to find parking, okay? And imagine three hundred people coming in, three hundred people leaving. You know, we need to address this in terms of a real concerted effort to make parking available if we're going to add seventy thousand people. And I just, I just want to add that, that Mr. Gunsberry can't utilize his existing seventy-space service lot for commercial parking due to Minneapolis ordinance five five one point seven five zero, which prevents any conversion of an accessory parking lot to a commercial parking lot. So even if he wanted to help, he can't, he's hamstrung by the city. So I'd like you to consider that. Please consider changing the ordinance or doing whatever you have to do to really seriously address parking in the North Loop, because it's a great neighborhood that we all love. So, thanks.
All right, thank you. We should...
Sorry, I apologize, I'm going to recycle, but...
No, we, we should, we should let everyone just speak once.
But Commissioner Bender wanted us to pontificate on the parking specifically, and so I wanted to bring it up again.
Well, we should, we should, we should let, let others who haven't spoken first speak, so if you don't mind, we should move on to another speaker.
Well, I'll yield my time to other speakers, but I just wanted to respond to the concerns about Acme parking, to end.
Okay, yeah, we can, we can see if commissioners have some questions. So anyone else who hasn't spoken yet, please come to the microphone and state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Andy Erickson. I live in North Hollywood, California. I was on the last season of Last Comic Standing, and I got second place. And I flew all the way in here to Minnesota to do this public hearing, and also to go I met a lot of my best friends at Acme Comedy Club. It was where I became a person. It was where I met my husband, it's where I got married. I got married in the comedy club. It was stuffed animal themed, and there were unicorns there, and I read a quote from Harry Potter at the sermon, and my mom cried for very different reasons. But it was a beaut, and Mick, and Tim Harmsen were there, and they, they officiated my wedding there. Because it's not just a comedy club, it's a home for so many people. It's, and it's also a place where people get to be themselves, find out who they are, express themselves. Comedy is a huge part of government, it's a huge part of figuring out what's right and what's wrong, pushing boundaries, challenging the norm, challenging things. Comedians can cause a lot more effect to this world than sometimes politicians can. You know, my mom was a politician, and she ran, she was on city council in Ham Lake, and she gave me some tips for today. I'm still shaking. And I also, I also take public transit a lot, as, and I, and it's not as glamorous as people think. I know we want to move towards, hey, let's get more people taking the buses and walking, but, I mean, I've been sexually harassed on the bus twice, and at bus stops multiple times. So we might want to, oh, let's do something about that, while we're here. So it's, it's, I get that it's a tricky situation, but we want to do what's best for the community, and I think Acme has done so much for the community, and I think we want to try to help them as much as we want to try to help something new. I guess something's new, so it seems more important, and it is like, it's kind of hard to like, take time just to help a, to help a comedy club, but they give so much to the community, and every night, Monday nights, they do free comedy nights, and they bring in kids from the college to come out, and it's free entertainment, and eighteen-year-olds can come out and do things and have fun, and they don't have to drink, and they can just be with their friends. And it's a great, it's a great place to meet people and connect with people, and I really hope you treat it as a historical building, because that's what it is, and, and respect all the buildings and offices there. And thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. All right, next speaker.
My name is Lindsay Wallace, and I live at twenty-five twenty-one Garfield. And I just wanted to speak to a lot of the concerns about parking, and that there hasn't been a lot of hard data around who's using parking and what parking is available to Acme, because the owner of that building has a hundred and fifty-six spots in a surface lot that's adjacent to the lot being developed. There's also a seventy-three-spot lot that's just down the street across from the Minnesota Orchestra, and I'm very much in favor of dense urban environments. I do think that some of the other variances, there are legitimate concerns about them, like the setback variance, but I do think that we need to build cities around who lives there and density and walkable neighborhoods. I go to Acme Comedy Club regularly, and I ride my bike, and I know a lot of other people do, too. I know that a lot of people I run into at those shows live in Minneapolis and arrive via alternative modes, and I would be concerned that we would prioritize surface parking lots over places for people to live.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is David Huntsberger. My address is five zero two North Kingsley Drive, Los Angeles, California. I flew in, I'm at Acme Comedy Club all this week, headlining. I came here to represent comedians from all over the world, to share how special this place is. It would be nice if we could all, or the crowds in general, could ride their bikes in the winter from all over the city, that seems entirely impossible. This place is so special, it's so unique. Comedy, I'm, if you haven't been to a comedy club, you might have a general sense of what it is, that it's just some lunatic talking about their penis in a very unoriginal way, and Acme is not like that. It is rare, it is unique, it, comedy in a lot of ways is treated like a commodity, much like going to Walgreens and going through the drive-through and getting your medication, it's just cycle people through. You've seen how the comedians came out to support the scene, that wouldn't happen everywhere. The rest of the world was jealous that Prince lived here. They're also jealous that Acme is here. Don't lose both of them.
All right, next speaker. And just a reminder, we have, I just want to make sure that we're not simply repeating things. We have heard a lot about the loss of parking and the setback variance, so just, just a reminder for anyone else who wants to...
Well, the good news is, I'm the, one of the concluders, so I'll probably touch those quick, but then there won't be a lot more of it.
And please, please state your name and address.
Yes, my name is Cy Ammonson. I live at thirty-five twenty Panzi Drive, Real Address, in Calabasas, California. I lived here for quite some time, and on the record, I would like to say that I am widely regarded as Louis Lee and Acme Comedy Company's favorite comic of all time, on the record. Everything David said was very true, and there's a lot of people who are fortunate enough to make their living. I know this is more than about just Acme, but I am one of those people who is fortunate enough to make my living coming out of that place. I travel from city to city. I've been in every major city and a lot of the non-major cities, like the Toledo's of the world, and I've developed the opinion that Minneapolis is the best city in the country. I'm obviously biased, but I think we can all agree the reason for that is the character, right? That's something that every single one of us is proud of, is the character of this city, and it comes from decades of people caring about the arts and private business and cleanliness and all the things that we take a ton of pride in. And when I travel anywhere, I was just in San Antonio, I was in Tulsa, I was down in Baton Rouge, not fun places, but when I mention I'm from Minnesota where there's...
Baton Rouge, not fun places, but when I mention I'm from Minnesota where there's...